Search meetings that we're likely to have over the next few months. Tonight, happy to introduce Randy Bennett, who has been here several times before. And Randy will be the point person from T S B A in helping us conduct this search. So tonight, we're taking some first steps and getting that ball rolling. So Randy, you want to lead us down the path?
All right, let me call your attention, I think we've all got a copy of the proposed timeline. Joyce and I have looked over all the dates, and she is proclaiming good, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what we're looking at doing, some key things here tonight, if you'll notice, what the board needs to decide as far as adopting this particular timeline and then making sure that we've got everything we need set for the community meetings. And of course, at that particular point in time, we want to go ahead and set the community meetings and make sure that we've got all that done, so we can get the input from the community and we can come back to you as far as the adoption of criteria.
Now, you don't want to have a community meeting on Valentine's Day? I mean, to me, that would be...
Quite the date, wouldn't it? It could wipe out.
Yeah, sweetheart of a deal, sounds like to me.
Save me money.
I'm sorry, Renee interrupted you with my hilarious Jeff.
And how many, and how many community meetings will there be?
Basically, we want to try to get all of your employee, you know, on a particular day, you know, employee groups, four, five of those, a luncheon meeting if you want to do a luncheon meeting, and one community meeting at night. That's kind of what we had in mind, but we can modify that schedule.
What would be the, the board member's role? And would we come and not say anything, or is it better for us not to come, or what's the...
Well, as far as the employee groups, we would appreciate if you did it on time.
Okay.
Because it does tend to intimidate them, to have a board member sitting over their team, they're much more open about their feelings and what they think. Particularly, particularly, I think, sometimes the classified employees are a little more nervous about that, and they don't always open up as easily as one of you is there. It might have a tendency to inhibit that.
Okay. And then the other ones, doesn't matter either way, so the, the community, open community meeting?
Oh, no. Matter of fact, you might want to show up at the community meetings. I've never found community meetings to be inhibited in any way. People will come and say, what's the plan?
We've had a few zoning meetings like that.
And honestly, if, if you don't show up, sometimes people will comment, in fact, if you're not there.
Yeah.
And even though that I tell them, we ask them not to come to this meeting for this purpose, it still seems to aggravate them. So I stopped asking boards not to come to community meetings, I think, if you want to do that. And obviously, I'd want you at a luncheon if you're going to do that, as far as conducting luncheons that way.
Okay. Questions on those meetings, because I know that's something that...
Yeah, I just asked, I mean, we're talking, as a community meeting, would you suggest, we'll one, or seven, or a representative member, two of the board to be there? Do you think it's good for all the board to be there?
I, I think if you decide to have the luncheon with the community leaders and business people, county commissioners, different things like that, I think all of them need to be there. I think that's important. But as far as the other community meetings, if we don't have, you know, all of you want to come to that, that's fine too. But just the employee meeting, I'm free.
Okay. So we're talking about an employee meeting, a general community meeting, and then a community leader?
We're talking about multiple employee meetings.
Okay.
Probably at least four of those. The principal central office staff would be first in the morning, then mid-morning, we look at the bus drivers, then the luncheon meeting if you choose to have one, and then afternoon, after the lunch rushes over, get the cafeteria folks in, then after school's actually closed, having the teachers after that, and then the community meeting. And I just realized, looking at this timeline, that I have messed this up, so we can have the community meetings and bring you back to the report the same week, and I've done that, which is... Sorry about that, I will get, we'll make that one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can, we'll threaten that out for you. Obviously, we'll have the community meetings that week, and I will, when we come back the next week, to, to adopt the criteria and push the selection of candidates back another week too. So we can ship that all in one week. I don't know what I was thinking.
Will all of the meetings be, are you planning on those being here?
Well, that'll be wherever you think they're best suited to be. We can have them, obviously, we want to meet central offices here, that makes sense. I don't know the other groups of employees, you may want to have them be here too. Business meeting, the business community leaders meeting, we need to look at where would be the best place to do that, and then community meetings, there's a number of good places around the county to do it. One of the high schools, the alternative, something like that, that'd be a better choice.
Is there usually a, a good turnout of, of interested parties for a community, for a general community meeting?
It varies. And by saying that, I'm, not all, no. If the community's angry about something, they show up. If they're pretty much satisfied with what's going on in the school system, and they think you guys are going to make a good decision, they may not show. And that's why we're, it's important for us to have the internet presence, so they can actually go onto our website and actually fill out the same survey that we asked the board at the community meeting to fill out. So anybody who can't make it, or really don't want to come out for the community meeting, will have the opportunity to fill out the same survey, and their input will get just as much importance attached to it as those who show at the meeting. The one thing, the one thing that I like to do at the meeting is to ask the three questions. And we record all the responses. Number one, what are you most proud of, as far as whatever county schools go? And then, number two, what are the challenges that you think new superintendent will have here? And then, number three, what characteristics are most important to what he wants this superintendent to be like? What are some of the personal characteristics that are important to you? And we'll record all of their answers. People just start talking, and we start getting at, and there'll be one person conducting the meeting, one person being described, and we get all that information now, and all that information we'll report and bring back to you too. Now, we have those same three questions available on our website when we, when the people go on to fill out the survey online too, so they still have the opportunity for that input, and that input will be included as well.
Other questions on these meetings?
Is it possible with the online survey for there to be an indication as to what part of the community they represent, like if they are a principal filling out an online, or if they're a community member?
Yes. The survey does have that on there, and the online survey does as well. Give you an opportunity to identify with a particular group.
And that survey is going to be on our website?
No, it'll be on our website.
So, and to get, to get the word out about that, how...
Yes, we give that information to the Daily News Journal, and we'll put a link on your website to our website. But as part of our, part of our survey program at the office, we have it hosted there, other hours of work. But we'll put a link on your website, give that information to the newspaper, and make sure that everybody understands all that information quickly go there.
Okay.
And since the newspaper has such a strong internet presence now too, there shouldn't be really much of a problem.
Terry.
I was just going, if I understood you right, on community meetings, you're going to try to do all of those in one day?
Yes. That's open to change if you all want to do that.
Would they happen simultaneously, or at various times through the day?
Oh, at various times through the day. Four different groups with a community meeting, business leader meeting at lunchtime on the day.
Okay, I was thinking, just with the general public, we said we might have multiples of those, right?
If, yeah, if we want to do that, if you want to do multiples that evening, then we, I would prefer to have the meetings going on all at the same time. It would be better. To make it one night, it doesn't confuse people. We're, tonight, we're having community meetings, talk about the news every now and then, you can go here, here, or here, or something like that. You prefer to do that.
What do you...
But if you have multiple nights, you create confusion.
And particularly, if we're not sure what the turnout's going to be, I'd hate to have three sparsely attended community meetings.
And that would be honestly likely.
Yeah. What are you thinking, Aaron?
Hard to attend multiple ones when they're all at the same time. And those community meetings, we can, we are encouraged to attend, right?
Yes, yes.
I think...
Probably, I would say geographically, go to one that's either interferences to your district or such.
Yeah.
I, I thought I understood, you said there's going to be one general community meeting?
That's, that's what I was, yeah, I was hearing that we were talking about.
That would be at the end of the day.
So there's only one opportunity for the general public?
That's what we're recommending, but if you want to have more, we will have more.
Okay.
Are you getting more to geographic concern, or at night? You want multiple nights, or in multiple locations, or what?
Concession for shift work, you know, I think that there's an opportunity, you know, for, for all of that. I mean, I, and, and I'm also looking at, you know, is, are, is there consideration for weekend versus weekday? Does this all take place on a weekday? You know, is it possible that we could, you know, do something in a weekend format? I don't, I don't know. I'm brainstorming and asking for...
I, I think we are doing something through, through internet possibilities and through the opportunity to, the, I'm satisfied there'd be more than a few, they'll contact us directly, skip the meeting part of it, I, I, I think we're accessible. I, I would, I would think, unless there's some cloud burst that we think we're going to have so many people, I, I think accessibility is very fair to do one. Given the other opportunities that people have.
I think you're right, that's why the internet is so important.
My guess is, will you tell me, won't we get more through the internet than we, we'll get through the, the general meeting?
It's likely. People don't generally like to come back out in the evening for meetings, or on the weekend either one, really. And if they've got an internet option, I would think that a number of them would take advantage of that. I think we'll have more input because of the internet option than just having the meeting. I would be more likely to fill out one on mine than I would be getting a meeting. I don't know about you. But once I get home, I like to speak.
Aaron's young and energetic. He's young and energetic, he might want to come up to a meeting.
I used to be. But it's not working yet.
Well, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, us to, to come across as we're not giving a, a good opportunity, but I, I feel very comfortable that we are giving a, a good opportunity to do it through a website that they can do at the leisure, them for a period of weeks, actually, to be online to do that. But if they feel that strongly, and to me, if you feel that strongly, you'll, and it's posted, and you know the date well ahead of time, you'll make arrangements to be there if you're that, if you feel like it's that important to make that one meeting. I, I'd be surprised if we'd have many show up at, at all, and not that I'm trying to discourage that, but I just would be surprised by that very thing. I would, I would do it online without question. I feel like my voice probably would be heard more online than it might be in a general meeting, frankly.
Well, you're going to have the same input opportunity online as you have in person. And the bottom line is, we're going to take all the data and compile it into a report and bring it here, and there really won't be any difference as to whether or not they fill it out online or fill it out in person. Some people feel strongly about being there in person, and other people think I can, I can express my opinion.
Wayne.
I've had a lot of opinions expressed to me through email over the years too, so I even, taking out, you know, the survey, you know, there's also that opportunity to tell us what they think, because our email addresses are, are out there, and our home phone numbers are out there too, so that, that's another opportunity to access us.
The only issue there would be, if they email you, the rest of us are not going to see it, right?
Well, then, well, I can, I can always forward it to Joyce, and then she can, or, yeah, that, that is...
Yeah, she could do that, yeah.
Would there be a problem with, on something like that, emailing the rest of the board members?
No.
Just forward that to, just forward it to...
Okay. Okay, so that, anything we need to decide about these meetings, Randy, or we...
Well, I'd like for you to formally adopt the timeline, but as I said, I just realized I've got two things in the same week that cancel a business. I don't know why, I didn't use that before.
Well, do you want to take a few minutes and fix that right now, or, or we can resi, we can recess briefly?
Yeah, if we could do that, I, I would appreciate that, and I, I apologize for that, Eric.
No problem, let's take a few...
Is there, is there anything else? I mean, if, if we're going to do that, do we want to discuss the entire timeline and then recess for adjustments, or recess just for this? I mean, are there any other adjustments that we would want to make?
Well, they're just working on the dates. What I was thinking was, he would give us new dates, and then we continue going through the timeline.
Good enough, thank you.
So entertain yourselves here for a few minutes.
Play quietly amongst yourself.
Put your head down on your desk, finish your work.
February the thirteenth and fourteenth, I won't be in town. Did Joyce... I'll take four steps.
What day is on, thirteenth and fourteenth?
February the thirteenth and fourteenth.
I'm okay.
You're okay, the meeting's only set. Okay.
Fifteenth is okay?
Fifteenth's okay, I'll, I'll get back in about noon.
You're on thirteen, fourteen, Mike.
My guess is, he's going to sit there and back a week anyway.
But you're okay fifteen?
I'll be okay at fifteen.
You're going to adopt the criteria? Now you can have your meetings.
I'll be in Fayetteville, East Tennessee, Monday, Tuesday.
So you're, you're making the assumption that adopt the criteria meeting is going to be a called meeting, is that, is likely going to happen, which will now be the twenty-second, I think? I bet that's what, that's going to be, everything going back up a week, it's going back up to twenty-four.
Mark, is, is, is June the fifteenth the, the magic day?
Yes.
If not in or around the fifteenth, that is the day.
Mr. Reed tells us that's the day.
The day, okay. You have to have it, have it done by then?
Completely done.
Completely, signed.
It has to be signed.
Signed, sealed, delivered.
Contract signed.
By state law, that day.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Is the, so fifteen will be...
When we define criteria, will, will propose salary be part of that defined criteria?
Yeah, I don't know.
I would think it would, would it?
We're going to have to chase that dragon at some point.
Sure.
Right, well, I, I assume that that would be in there.
I don't know what you're talking about.
open the new building there on campus?
I think it's...
I'll take that as a no.
I don't really know, no. I just know that people have been fighting over it for months already.
Living what?
They've been fighting over the space for months, even before the new building's ready. So no, I don't know what's going to go in there. A lot of it, I mean, there's tons of meeting rooms, meeting rooms in there, which I think will stay meeting rooms.
It's pleased to see the legislative delegation so pro of Seidville.
Yeah. I assume they know something that they're confident that's actually going to happen there.
Something real, I mean, that, that, those facilities are so adequate.
Oh, yeah.
All the science.
It's amazing to me, though, you know, how much...
We saw it in the last thing here, something millions of dollars, more than a hundred and twenty-five. How, how much we've spent as a county building our schools?
Oh, yeah.
And we've been waiting ten years, which is a name builder example down at N T S U.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, I apologize...
Yes, let's come, I don't know, let's come back to order, in case we weren't, just want to make sure the TV folks know we're, we're back and you...
After confirming with Joyce and looking at the situation, if you, if you look at the column there, where it says set community dates, we're looking at using that date, the fifteenth, that we talked about for the community meeting. And then, me coming back with the recommended criteria on the twenty-third, which will be just a little over a week after. And once I do that, once you approve the criteria, we should be able to get the brochures ready. I'll bring you some mock-up copies of the brochures, and you can take a look at that, we'll post that the next day. And then, we're looking at the select candidates when we come back to make the recommendation to you, the twenty-seventh of March. Now, everything below that is pretty much up to your schedule anyway. We're not directly involved in that, but we are very much involved in the community meetings, the criteria, and making the recommendation to you. So anything after that, you all can adjust without any, any problems, whatever works well for you as far as the interviews and the final basis of doing community business that you wish to do. Does that work?
Anybody got those dates?
Down through the select candidates.
Right.
Mr. Hodge?
Terry.
I guess while we look at this thing, if it's not a problem, it may be something Joyce needs to look at. I'd like to see, see what we're looking at after we select candidates, as far as these dates go. I think we're going, you're going to start, it looks like you're going to start pushing time in there.
You're going to have to redo all those dates.
Well, because we have regular board meeting dates, we've got search committee dates, and we've got budget committee dates, so we've got a busy two, three months coming up. And we, we haven't really set any of those, have we, Joyce?
No, I'm holding on, I got the board, but I'm holding.
Okay. Is that what you're getting at, Terry, that we just need to coordinate?
Yeah, well, what I was looking at, when you start, if you take the twenty-seventh there, you start looking at all these other dates, I think you get into a tight timetable there, I just wanted...
Oh, yeah.
Let, let me point out something, I built in some extra time, if you go through to the bottom there, negotiate offer contract, that's a two-week period, and I frankly don't think it'll take that long. I think you could make that up with those weeks right there, starting at, start, you could actually still have some of your interviews the same week that you select, that, that you decided to be selecting candidates for the final report, and then move that into the next week as well, and then I think you could play with those dates there, and ease them in.
And there's still some wiggle room, because you have us announcing the appointment on May first, which we would all be delighted if we do that.
Yeah, we did move all that forward, I was trying to, to really get it, so we were comfortable and knew where you were going, but we can easily move a couple of those dates too. I know you were interested in a fairly tight timeline to get, so there is extra time built into this toward the end of, and a little more flexibility for it.
Mark, are you suggesting that maybe before we solidify those dates, that we go ahead and, and put regular scheduled board meetings in, in the pro, in that process too, so we'll kind of have...
Well, I think, I think we're going to have to start looking at all that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my point, yeah.
Let, let Joyce and I work on that a little bit. I mean, some of this is going to depend on the candidates' schedules too, so, you know, obviously, on, when it comes to interviews, we're going to have to be a little flexible there, I guess.
Well, if you will decide on interview, interview dates, then we'll basically give the candidates those dates and say...
Pick one of these?
Pick one of each.
Okay.
And what I generally do is take somebody who's farther away than the first shot.
Okay.
But the candidates are going to have to conform with the dates that you choose.
Okay, well, so then we just identify, I don't know, how many, three, or, depends on how many we want to interview, I guess. And that also, we need to decide how many candidates we want T S B to bring to us. And do we want to interview everybody they bring, or do we want to do an additional cut after they bring sort of semifinalists?
I think definitely an additional cut after we see whatever T S B A's recommendation is, because I certainly expect also the opportunity to consider what T S B A brings back, but also to consider whatever candidate any board member may want to bring as well. And then, at that point, we take a look and see who among those we would want to interview.
So you're saying you would add names to, to the T S B A list, is that what you're saying?
Would I have that opportunity?
The board would as a whole, you wouldn't as an individual, if, if four of us, at least that's my understanding, if four of us voted to add the person, then we would add them.
Right, I, I, I would agree, you know, if four of us decide to, sure.
But I don't think we want to have a situation where any of us can add whatever names to the finalists, that's, I don't think that's what you were suggesting, right?
No, no, but, but for consideration, I'd say, fine. Likewise, I think if T S B A returns a candidate and four of us say, not interested, I'm going to pass on that, then we don't necessarily have to interview that.
Yeah, right, as we said from the beginning, it's our, it's our call.
It's certainly your prerogative to do that, that's what you wish to do.
Wayne.
So hypothetically, you, T S B A brings ten candidates to...
No, that's a little...
That's a little, okay?
Yeah.
Well, but just using that for...
We'll, we'll be recommending a certain number and giving you all of the finalists that we get, all, all of them that come in, so you'll have a chance to take a look at those, if you wish. But generally, we, we are asked to recommend between three and five.
Okay, so, well, let's go back to that scenario, so that we have that, those five. So would, would we then go around the table and, and choose the one, or, or choose three, you know, make it a, a step level, you know, okay, they didn't make the cut, and then here's what we're left with? So take the five, go down to two, take the five and go down to three, or something?
That would be up to the board.
Okay.
Generally, what most boards do is go ahead and interview the ones that we recommend, and if they're not happy, or if they think they need to work with other people, then we go back to just square one as far as choosing a candidate. Generally, that's the way it's done, you're, of course, free to do it any way you wish to do it.
It, it's, it sounds to me like the, the, the way, if I have a candidate that I want to see on that list, or given strong consideration, there's nothing that prevents me calling you and say, this is somebody I feel very strongly about, this is why I'd like to see this person on the list, and then you, you can share with me, well, he or she probably will be, probably won't be because of whatever.
Well, I mean, a, after we, you know, after I have conversations with each of you individually, and after we get a chance to determine what the community's looking for in the criteria that you ultimately adopt, and what you're looking for, we're going to recommend, at least as far as what we found out about them, the ones that we cleared are the top candidates. If, if we, if we feel a person doesn't want to be a top candidate, we won't put them in.
And I would like...
Even if you tell, even, even if you...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, in fact, I would even think it might be appropriate for us as a board to certainly discuss and maybe even decide that we not lobby this independent consultant that is supposed to be bringing us a, a recommendation from a, from a non-biased perspective, and yet a very educated perspective. And that's why I think it's so important to me that, once those recommendations come, okay, that's a recommendation from that person in the mix. Are there any recommendations from any of these seven people in the mix, having looked at those packets, applications, resumes? If there are, make your case for it. And at that point, then, the board decides, we'd like to interview these people.
My perspective was that, since we are paying T S B A to do this, that that wouldn't be an issue, that, that we would take that up after their recommendation, that we would not lobby. That was, that was assumed by me, since we're, since we're paying them to do this.
Yeah. I, I'm more comfortable with that, that after they make their impartial recommendation, then we have that opportunity. If there's somebody that we say, wow, I really expected to see so-and-so, then at that point, an individual board member can make the case and say, I really think we ought to interview this individual.
We just need to be careful that we're not interviewing, I mean, these interview days are long and, you know, for all concerns, so we need to be reasonable about how many we bring in.
You're looking at probably a three, three and a half hour process for each interview, if you're going to do it right. Take your time, really get to know the person, see what they have to say. We're going to recommend to you what we think is the best of the field, and... We're gonna recommend to you what we think is the best of the field and if you choose to interview those, that's your choice. If you choose to modify that, is that your choice too? It is, but we won't put someone on this just because we've been lobbying to.
Right.
We don't think they're the right person to board, we think there's some issues there. So, that's all I can say.
Yeah, no.
Once we make that recommendation to you, it's gonna be the fairer recommendation as it could possibly be. We're gonna base it on all the factors we have available to us. And at that point in time, if you decide you want to, to change that, modify that, that's, that's up to you. I mean, as I told you initially, the law gives you the ultimate authority to pick whoever your superintendent schools is. It's totally your decision. And this process that we've developed is more of a facilitation process than anything else. And that's what we wanna do, make it easier to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would think if, if individual board member has someone, maybe already has something in mind, then they need to let it be known early on rather than wait until, until that, that timeframe that's all of worth going in and then.
Well, one thing we do in the community meetings is we ask folks if there's someone that they would like for us to invite to interview. And everyone has a chance, I mean, board members as well too, saying invite this person to interview. We're, we're gonna follow up on all that, we're gonna send the letters to anyone that we're specifically asked to invite and get them in the, in the mix, to if they choose to participate in the mix. So, we do that early on.
Well, that's pretty well, would take care of that log, logjam to a certain degree.
Yeah, I think so. A- and the people who are really interested in the job, uh, will apply, I think, and those who aren't, do not. But, uh, we're going to invite any name that was just recommended to us by anyone at any of the community meetings.
Okay. Other questions about this process?
The candidate files, if we are then to have the opportunity to make a case for someone that we would say, "I think this person should be considered," what timeframe will we have between access to candidate files and the decision of who to interview?
Randy, tell us, the files stay in your office until that time that you bring us your list, is that how it works?
We, we will keep them until the twenty-seventh, but they're still a subject to open record requests, even at our, even at our office, and the media will come and take a look at them. Of course, we're gonna have to share that with, if they do, but, uh, and generally that happens. Generally what happens is the media will get some information and they will come back and it'll, it'll end up being a paper ask who's on the list.
Right. It, will your ad have, will your ad have a deadline, or will it be deadline for applications, or will it be until filled?
Oh, yeah, there will be a deadline.
So I, to answer Aaron's question, I would think you would go to T S B A between the deadline and March twenty-seventh.
So my access to the applications are to go to T S B A and?
Well, that's what we're discussing, but, yeah, the, the alternative would be wait until after March twenty-seventh, then you're gonna need a period of time to do that, and that pushes everything back.
Right.
Uh, I mean, that's the way I see it unfolding. But again, this board can decide to do it however we wanna do it. As long as we keep in mind, we need to wrap the process up in a timely manner.
If you remember, I believe when I first came to talk to you, that I said that, uh, there are perennial candidates for these sorts of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one thing that would probably save you some time is to look at the recommendations and really consider interviewing them first before you dig into the others. And if you do dig into the others, the, the, the problem is you may spend time on a file of a perennial candidate that you really have need to. So the, the ones that we're gonna recommend to you are the ones that we think are high-quality, think that will do a good job for you. And the people that we don't recommend, for whatever reason, I mean, some of them are, are, are people that were really, will be really close, but we don't recommend because somebody edged them out somewhere. But there will be a certain percentage of those candidates that, uh, we wouldn't recommend. And we wouldn't want to see spend a lot of time studying, that's up to you, you can do that. But that's the advantage of having the recommendations as far as which ones to interview, usually starting.
Mm-hmm.
A- and you might find it less cumbersome to go ahead and interview all the part of our recommended finalists before you really get involved in the process you're talking about. But it's gonna be time, we have twenty to thirty candidates, that's gonna take some time. And I'm not gonna stand up in a public meeting and tell you, "Don't pick this one, don't pick that one," because I don't want you to sit.
Sure.
Okay, so, keep that, keep that in mind too, so.
I'm sorry.
Um, the ones that we recommend, we're gonna feel great about. And we're gonna recommend that you, uh, take your time to talk to them and see what you know, see what you find out about them. And once you do that, if you're not happy with any of those, then I think that's the time to dig into the files and, uh, look for others, or possibly even post again, you can do that as well too, if you're not happy with them.
I'm not comfortable as a board member not looking at any application that comes in. And it is my expectation that I would look at any application that comes in, or at least have the opportunity to. That's not, that does not change your process at all. I don't want to alter your process, but I don't want to have my, uh, my review process as a board member. I don't want it inhibited in any manner.
No, it doesn't alter our process, but you do need to keep in mind that you're up against a mid-June deadline too, as far as making the right decision on contracts.
And I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But what I, I guess what I'm getting around to is if we are adopting a criteria on February twenty-third and we're posting a position on February twenty-fourth, we would close that posting on some date. And any board member would have from that date until you return select candidates on the twenty-seventh of March, where we could come to T S B A and we could sit for hours on end, if we so chose, and look at all of the resumes if we, if we wanted to. If that's accurate, that's all I'm driving at.
I, I'm sure it'll do well.
Okay. Yeah, no, I thought, and that's what I was trying to get at earlier, I think you have, these are all public records and you certainly have the, the, any of us would have the right to go down there and pour through those files for whatever, you know, from the deadline till, well, from the deadline on, for that matter.
Okay.
If I be held on Mr. Deddy, I don't know if you have any idea what the deadline would be for?
I'm looking at the twenty-second of March.
Twenty-second, as far as the deadline? So that, that would be about one week, less than that, right?
Yeah, less than that, I can, I can move that if necessary, but that's what I'm looking for.
So your, your screening process would take place in that one week? Is that, okay.
Well, you'd be working on them as they come in anyway, so.
Oh, yeah, working on as they come in, as far as finding out the information and get it, get it in the community together. But I can do that back earlier than.
Well, it just might be that, Aaron, you might have to make more than one trip, that you'd go and do the first twenty and?
There, there's, there's nothing that prohibits you from looking at the, uh, the files.
As they come in, yeah.
I mean, they're available.
Yeah, I was just, yeah. Terry.
I guess, I guess, look, look, listening to everything, one thing I gotta, sort of way out of this whole process, we're paying T S, T S B A to do it, so, uh, for me to go down there and get involved and all that, I think would defeat per, purpose, that's just my opinion, uh, so.
Paul.
I know we've hired T S B A to do this, uh, and applications go to them, but I, I feel uncomfortable with the idea that I'd like to see the list and have, and it'd be available for me to review any candidate that I wanted to that was on that list. Their list that comes to, to us certainly is a priority list by the standards that they have gathered, by the meetings and that we have total. But, that fine line that he mentioned there just a few minutes ago, that fine line for him might not be a fine line for us. So I'd like to, I'd like to feel welcomed and comfortable in going in and looking at those, whether I did or not.
Right.
And the timeline, you've done this lots of times, but I don't want it to be open so long that it puts us in a bind. I think the people who really want the job and are interested in the job, they gonna know and they gonna be able to, to close that, make that, uh, application deadline if it's one week or two weeks. And certainly, I think, almost a month, i- in my opinion is, you might need it to screen them as they come in, I don't know. But, uh, uh, March twenty-seventh, uh, that's a, that seems like a long time to me. And March fifteenth, uh, if it's not a burden to, uh, the screening process that you say, it'd suit me to close it earlier. I, I don't wanna wish to wash a person's set, uh, I wanna look at it and say, "This is a job I'd really like to have."
Well, we're, and that's what we're here tonight to do, to decide the timeline. If the board would like to do the smaller post, uh, shorter posting period, that's certainly not a problem. As a matter of fact, if we take the twenty-seventh back to the fifteenth, we've got a shorter posting period and we're back on schedule. And the board's gonna cover some of the deadlines in the timeline, so that gives us roughly a little over two weeks to post. And, uh, that's, that's your all decision.
Tim.
But that's posted with criteria as opposed to initial announcement of the position, so it's, w- won't it be, will it, will it not be put out on some type of publication that the position's open, criteria to be announced later?
Um, generally, we, we don't post anything until we get everything.
So what is the initial announcement of position that's on this timeline for the seventeenth? What, what does that actually mean then?
Oh, yeah, I mean, just the very fact that you've been talking about it here is basically kind of an initial announcement because it's a public meeting, people are finding out about that now. I mean, that's when the word's getting out, and the word is out, I know that, we've gotten some interest in it already. But, uh, that's just kind of the initial announcement that comes from having the meetings and talking about the schedule of what we wanna do. So, when you brought the four firms in to do that, that was a very good initial announcement. Now, our posting will involve the criteria.
Okay.
And as soon as we get that, we'll, we'll go over here to the right and see if the printed brochure is in place.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And that will be the actual formal posting at that point in time.
But Donald, you're proposing the, from the twenty-third of the formal not, adoption of criteria to the fifteenth, which runs a neighborhood of three weeks, as opposed to four?
The fifteenth would be the deadline, or the fifteenth would be the day that he comes?
No, that would move the deadline back to probably the ninth or even the twelfth, to make sure we have time for the screening committee.
Wow, yeah.
To go through all of it.
It seems, uh.
It's tight.
And it's awfully short, seems to be.
We've done it before, but it is tight. We've posted for as few as two to three weeks and we've posted for as long as six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, depending on when we get started in a situation like that. And I, I agree with what several of you said, if somebody's really interested in the position, they're going to apply, but in order to grant it, we're gonna set. Um, but the, uh, the slightly longer posting periods give an opportunity for people to really talk about it with their families and get this in thought before they finally do it, it doesn't put the rush on them before they, 'cause once you apply for a position like this, you become a public figure. And a lot of people wanna really talk it over with their family and make sure they're not involved in this.
We need to come to a resolution on this, Terry.
Yeah, I'm just, chances are, I'm, I'm just speaking myself personally, 'cause I'm open on any of these dates, uh, I hadn't, I hadn't even thought about going down there, looking at the application, anything like that, but with what Donald's talking about, needing extra time, I don't see a problem with it. Uh, you know, if you're talking about moving it back to the twelfth, it, cut it off, or cut, do you cut off at the twelfth and fifteenth for, uh, you know, you got fifteenth to twenty-seventh to go down and look at application, I guess, is that, is that what you're thinking, time-wise?
That's what I was thinking.
So I'm confused now, were we talking about changing the deadline or changing the date at which we're presented with the candidates? You're, you're talking about changing the deadline for application, right?
I was changing, talking about the deadline.
Okay, you're not talking about changing this March twenty-seventh day?
No, you just want more time to get down to Nashville, I think.
Okay, okay.
What day is fifteenth of March? What, what day is, in, in, does March, March fifteenth works, right? Is that?
As far as bringing you, I reckon.
No, no.
No, that's a deadline. That was your suggestion, wasn't it? Donald is making it March fifteenth?
The way I understand it, what he's asking for is move the deadline back to the fifteenth to allow more time between there and selecting candidates, instead of five days, it would be a twelve-day window that, as a board, we'd have our time to look at if we wanted to.
These, these things gotta have three days, four days to go over.
Well, we're getting to twelve days now.
Yeah, we're extending that time.
We're not changing the March twenty-seventh, we're just changing the.
So if you go from the fifteenth, you're looking probably the nineteenth or twentieth, so you, you're, you're at a week.
You'd like me to cut off the application as of the fifteenth?
Uh, that's what I'm hearing. I'm not, I'm not following your point here.
But even if you cut the applications off fifteenth, Randy says they've gotta have three or four days to.
We've got twelve every time. Yeah, but he's got till the twenty-seventh now.
No, if you go to fifteenth, you're up to the nineteenth or twentieth, so you basically got a week. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
Well, at this point right now, there's just five days.
He's got five days.
You're adding a week, we're adding.
We're adding a week to that process.
Right.
Yeah.
You're giving, you're actually giving him more time.
More, we're giving him more time, giving us more time if we wanna go down there and look at it. We're just giving the candidates a, a week less, basically.
But your deadline's the fifteenth.
Deadline for applications, yes. But the twenty-seventh would still be the day which T S B A comes, Randy comes and gives us his, his recommendations.
And that would give me almost two, almost two weeks.
Okay.
We're making your life easier.
I'm just hoping, I'm just hoping I can decipher what I'm writing. But, yeah, that's, that's not a problem, as a matter of fact, by having that deadline and be coming back with a report on it, that, that gives me even more of a chance.
You just need to get a head nod on that, Mr. Chairman, on the fifteenth.
We can vote. Well, let's do, let's vote on the whole timeline.
Okay.
Just do it once. So right now, let's go over this, make sure we're all up to speed. The first change is changing, and I scratched it out so effectively, I don't know what it did say.
The community meetings, may, may I?
Yeah, please do, Randy, yeah. Even better.
Uh, the community meetings, we have announced that on February the fifteenth.
Okay.
The, February, uh, February the twenty-third, I'll be coming back for the adoption of the criteria, giving you the recommendations based on what input we got from the community. We will post it the twenty-fourth, and the deadline for the applications will be March fifteenth. And I will come back and make a recommendation to you on candidates that run March twenty-seventh, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's what I think I heard. Everybody in agreement on that?
I would just add, uh, just for the sake of argument, uh, March fifteenth, four o'clock P M.
March fifteenth, I close the business, I'll close the business.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now the dates that follow March twenty-seventh, do we need to? Well, I think Joyce is gonna have to work on the, I don't think we can adopt those tonight, do you Joyce?
No.
'Cause we have to fold them into all of the other meetings.
Yeah, the, the ones that we've just spoken of, if you can adopt that tonight, that would definitely give me all I need.
Okay.
As far as making the modifications for the interviews, that can be something that you all do. I have to take a look at all of the other obligations.
Okay.
I think it would be, I'm sorry.
Grant first.
I, I think, uh, most of us have a class, and, and now they obviously have a class with, with, with you, what, what records you have at that point.
Sure.
Or lunch hour or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to waste your lunch hour.
That's what keeps it slender, I, I skipped it.
Aaron.
As we draw a line of what we would potentially adopt tonight, uh, I'm kinda drawing it right underneath select candidates before notify unsuccessful candidates, because I wouldn't want any notification until the board hears and reviews that recommendation on the twenty-seventh. And so, that's the part, that's the spot where I'm comfortable saying that we could adopt to there potentially tonight.
Makes sense. Tim, did you have something?
I, I, I just think from a standpoint, even though we may not set an affirmed date, I think it would be nice, from the public's perspective, to see, uh, an announcement, appointment tentatively to be on or about May the first, on or about, it's, just to give some general idea of what we're expecting, to be able to close this up by. I don't know that we have to give a firm date that specifically would be May first, but.
Well, we have Melan here, and I'm sure she'll report on that.
Review all of the meetings, and we'll push that back to the fifteenth, that's still.
But, but I'd say, may, I'd say, can't we be comfortable saying that we expect to get this taken care of by May fifteenth? Can we not make that as a statement?
Uh, I'm comfortable we're going to have it wrapped up by June fifteenth.
There you go. That's a statement, I just asked, I just asked for one, I don't care what number it is, I don't care.
You just want to know, you want to know.
No, I, I do, I just think that, that, uh, Melan's going to write something, it'd be nice that we let her write something that we have officially discussed and say, we, we, we understand we have a June fifteenth deadline, and we're comfortable we can meet that.
Yes.
Where the time schedule is right now.
We hope to beat that, but we don't want to promise anything. Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Tim. Aaron.
All right, changing gears, different thing. Uh, it says define the criteria and adopt the criteria. Define the criteria for us. What is, quote, the criteria?
We're doing that tonight, aren't we?
No.
The, uh, criteria are, are two things. Number one, what exists in your policy number, because you've already adopted that. And so, but number two is also the personal qualities that rise to the top from the community meetings and all the input we get, and at that point in time, when I come back on the twenty third of February to adopt the criteria, that will be the time that you will look at the criteria, the recommendations as far as which were the top rated. We're looking between eight and ten of those personal characteristics that we think are, are most important to the community, recommend those to you. And you can modify those at that point in time if you wish, or you can adopt them as they are, and they will also go into the brochure. As, as they've been adopted. We will bring you, uh, we will bring you that information if that's enough for you to take a look at and make a final decision on.
Is there anything else?
No.
I think it's important that we also include the priorities of our system, and some of the, uh, things that, that we intend for Rutherford County Schools to accomplish. Um, maybe that comes out, maybe it doesn't, in personal attributes, but personal attributes seem to me to refer to, uh, the, you know, the characteristics of the individual management style, uh, their experience, those kind of things. I think that it's equally important to acknowledge what it is that this system is currently accomplishing, focused on accomplishing, and anticipating accomplishing.
That, uh, generally in the brochure, we look at kind of introductory paragraph that would include very much what we have in there too. The criteria included, uh, a bit of a sales pitch from the Chamber of Commerce about the county, what makes it such a great place to live. Uh, and then, you know, all the pictures on what we're looking for from the candidates, as far as what they need to submit from a paperwork standpoint. Uh, we do have a finite amount of space in, in that, but I think what you're talking about, we probably do need to code in the first couple paragraphs about what other candidates are looking for. So.
And it's TSBA composed that, that, uh, information and that, you know, synopsis?
We'll get the information from you, and got to put something together, of course, you can modify that too, we can modify it at that point. But, uh, we get the information from you on the school district, where the school district is, the key things that you like us to put in there in the brochure, and you all can be thinking about that. And you just email that to us, and we can drop it in the brochure and make sure, make sure it makes sense. It's got to make sense, it's got to fit. We can't have too much in the brochure, because people won't read it if you do it. It's got to be white space, or whatever color we have in the sheet. But, uh, we've got to sell the school system, we've got to sell the county, we've got to make sure that people out there know what, what we've got here, and what, uh, what kind of community they're looking at. And, uh, I, I think, I think we get what you're asking for in the brochure.
Likewise, you mentioned, uh, it also takes into consideration our current policy. Uh, I, I'd like to hear from the board, not only our policy of what is in school board policy, but also, do we have, uh, need or interest to review the administrative handbook, uh, or, or anything else, uh, about our school system? And, and indicate that moving forward, we expect this to be similar or different? Uh, do we have, you know, anything that we would want to clarify in the expectations of what the director of schools, you know, would do? Uh, you know, so that, so that the expectations are in line, uh, with, with what the board is, is anticipating?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sounds like a wonderful interview question.
Yeah.
That, to me, that's what you get at the heart of that.
It's more of the interview than the job.
In the interview process, and those, those kinds of hard questions, I think it's, you, you, you want to ask them, and hear them directly from them, as opposed to necessarily to put them as far as criteria is concerned. I mean, there's a, there's a ton of that that we're going to be asking, and want to know.
Okay.
And, and, and look for their response to, I think, I think that's interview information.
I think you're right.
All right, along those same lines then, also, I think Mr. Tackett, uh, mentioned this briefly or something, is there a salary expectation that's part of the, uh, define the criteria?
Some systems put salary range in, some do not, that's going to be up to you.
What would be the board's feeling? Or is that a conversation for February twenty third?
I think that's really more a conversation for candidates who are pretty serious about it. Uh, if you're willing to be somewhat flexible, I would simply state that salaries are negotiable if we did that.
And if we're not willing to be flexible?
Then you need to say salary range here is blank.
On February twenty third?
Yeah, I mean, I need to, if, if you're going to be definite, I want this salary and nothing different, then I need to know that so I can put that in the brochure.
So, do we take from now to February twenty third to consider that, or do we discuss that tonight?
That's a, you got from now.
I don't think we do it tonight.
Okay.
Uh.
Was this a special call?
It was.
Yeah.
It is.
Might be getting away from the intent of the call, but I don't know, you have to check with your council on that, but, uh, that's something you all have to decide before February the twenty third.
Right.
And all you can do is let me know.
It seems to me the examples, well, I don't know. I just started to discuss it after saying we shouldn't discuss it, so I withdraw all of them. Other questions about this process, this timeline? Because if I'm right, Randy, our main order of business tonight is to adopt this, and that gets the ball rolling, right?
Yes, at least up to the line that, uh.
The line of the sand that Aaron is drawing, yes.
That's all they talk about, and that's fine, because that gives me everything I need to move ahead.
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, motion's adopted. Any other business? So, Randy, we will see you on February fifteenth, I take it? And Joyce will be getting back to all of us on the, uh, on our schedule, and with the details about, uh, the activities on the fifteenth. So, it sounds like on the fifteenth, if possible, we want to be available for a possible lunch meeting, and then a community meeting in the evening. Okay, well, Randy, thank you very much for your help, and we're adjourned.